They fucking kill us. And they think by pushing us around every day, whether it's in this meeting room because they think they're better than us, or whether it's in the streets, they think they can kill us, it ain't right.
We're not gonna help them!
That's why we're here today.
That's right.
Fuck this meeting starting, we don't give a shit anymore. What do we want?
Justice!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Justice!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Justice!
When do we want it?
Now!
Justice for whom?
Isaac!
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 Who's meeting?
Our meeting!
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 Alright, first of all, I wanna just say something real quick here. Did you show up here today?
Yeah!
Did you show up here today?
Yeah!
Alright, so the meeting is about to start, we need people to sit down, you can still have the banner in the back there, in that corner, so they can start the meeting. We're gonna be on the first agenda, so we're gonna have a few people that are gonna line up and start, and anybody else from who showed up here today who wanna also speak, you can do that. And so first of all, I wanna just thank all of you for really coming out here today, this really means a lot, and we need to continue this fight. So, here's where we're gonna start, we're gonna have the city council, the mayor come in, they'll start their meeting, they have to do some protocol, now the first motion will be, is to have a common prayer now, so we get a chance to speak.
The police act as an apparatus to reinforce class structure in our society. They perfect, they protect the upwardly middle class, they have to win portions of our society. They carry out the business of the one percent. They're the largest gang organization in the United States of America.
Welcome everyone to July 16th meeting of the Eagan City Council, it's our second regular meeting of the month of July. I wanna welcome everybody to home tonight, we're appreciative that you are here, and we're looking forward to hearing from you. In our council meetings ordinarily, our public comment, or visits to be heard as we call it, is at the end of the meeting. For the community watching on cable television, I wanna give a brief update, about two weeks ago tonight, Eagan Police and a number of other agencies were involved in a several-hour incident that resulted in an officer-involved shooting.
Murder!
You act your language!
That shooter killed him, we have their investigation by the BCA, understandably. We have a community of people who has questions and concerns, and wants to be heard. We in the city of Eagan wanna make sure your comments are, we want you to be heard, and we wanna listen. So, while our visits to be heard is ordinarily at the end of the meeting, as we move on to adopt the agenda tonight, I'm gonna ask the council to change the agenda up and move our visits to be heard section to the beginning of the meeting, so we can get to your comments and your concerns to be heard. So, I'm gonna make the motion for an agenda right now, and ask that the agenda be changed and move that visits to be heard up. I'll make that motion, and then following that, I'll open up that listening session with a few comments. So, with that, Mr. Robber, very intentional changes to go on and change as we hold the mayor. I'd move the agenda by, and then move visits to be heard to the front of the meeting, so we can hear from our audience tonight. Let's move and second it, all in favor of the motion, signify as any, aye. And opposed, nay. That motion carries, so we've adopted an amended agenda, and immediately following the adoption of the agenda and preceding recommendations and presentations, we will have our traditional listening session. Before we open up that listening session, and I do appreciate everybody being here, and I appreciate your cooperation in letting us move that up. Any officer-involved shooting is-
Murder!
-in particular tragedy, when it ends in the death of anybody-
The murder!
The murder!
Isaac.
His name is Isaac Aiden.
Isaac Aiden, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I am-
You can't read?
I want folks to know that these kind of events are tragic, and my thoughts and prayers go to everyone involved.
Do something!
In particular, the family of Isaac, who I know Chief Roger New has had the opportunity to be in communication with, as well as the BCA, I appreciate their willingness to be in communication with us. I assure you, as Chief New has, that that communication will continue, and will continue in conjunction with the BCA, but we look forward to hearing from you. I do wanna say to the family, I can't possibly imagine the grief and the pain that you feel from this loss.
So what are you gonna do about it?
There are-
Exactly, what are you gonna do about it? We're here.
-questions that are left unentered for the time being, and I appreciate and understand that, and I sympathize with that. And I want you all to know that on a personal level, I very much have been thinking about Isaac and his family, and the grief that they've been through.
Well, call the Dakota County Attorney, submit the evidence, and we want the police prosecuted.
We are here and move-
Put the pigs away.
-our visits to be heard up to the front of the meeting, because you want to be heard, and we want to listen.
We want justice! We want justice!
With that, let me please just-
We want justice for all!
-offer a couple of suggestions in terms of how we proceed with visits to be heard, and public comment. As I've said, we want to listen. When we take public comment, that is what we do.
They asked you-
I would invite you and ask you, that generally speaking, we try to stick to about four minutes of public comment per individual, we are not rigid on that rule, but would appreciate your cooperation in it. With that, with that said, the other thing that I want you to know ahead of time is that, by and large, when we take public comment, we let you be heard, we listen, and we do not follow up on comments from any single individual, or generally speaking, on the total of the comments. There may be some comment afterwards, but it may well be limited, this form is primarily so that you can be heard, and that the council can hear what you have to say. So with that, my understanding is, we don't usually keep a sign-up sheet, some have requested that there be a sign-up sheet, is my understanding correct? There's one circulating, for folks who wanna speak?
It's not necessary, sir.
I don't think it's necessary, it's not necessary? Okay, great. We don't traditionally keep a sign-up sheet, we just call people up and you order them to say come. So with that, I'd like to open up our listening session, and invite you to say your piece and speak your mind. If you could, offer your name and where you're from, to start with, just so we know you a little bit.
My name is Jelani Husein, I'm the executive director of Kevon Soder. I wanna start off by just greeting you, the city council, the mayor, and everybody who came here, in the greeting of peace, that we greet each other with and others every single day. Salaam alaikum, wa alaikumullah, wa rakaatuh, peace, to the best, to the unity of all things. I start with that, because today, this community, and everyone who came here, is mourning the loss of a young man who had so much ahead of him. Not only an innovator, an entrepreneur, someone who was loved by his family, someone who was respected by his peers, and someone who was helping his community in any way he possibly could. This young man, sadly to say, all that has been shared so far publicly has been traffic violations, and with all due respect, with what that has been shared, I have traffic violations, just like everybody, and almost everybody. The fact that that was shared is enough to tell us that they don't have anything on this young man. The reality is, today, we're asking for a very simple thing. It's simple, it is the right of the people, it is a right for Isaac and his family, that we know the truth of exactly what took place on July 2nd. We wanna know what took place that resulted in the killing of Isaac Aiden. Every single city, similar to you, makes a decision just like this, but your city can be different today. You can lead the nation in holding your law enforcement accountable for their actions resulting in whichever the result is, and in this case, killing a young man who had so much in front of him. We wanna know exactly what happened, and I know we have bureaucracy when it comes to videos and when and who does what, but every single one of you has been elected to be a change agent for this city, and to respond to the needs of the citizens, and every law that seems so just in this country was unjust at a period of time, and so every policy and procedure that you may have in front of you may not be right. And that's why we're asking for you to do the best and most important thing for this community and for this family, and number one, release all of the video and all of the evidence that led to the killing of this young man. Number two, as you can see, this community, we are not going anywhere.
No way!
If you thought somehow this is a one-time offer, we're not. We believe in justice, not for ourselves, we believe in justice for Isaac, but we also believe in justice for your children.
That's right!
And we would be here for them if they were gunned down by police officers.
Right!
So in part of you is some procedures, some procedures and some policies that are denying us to see the truth of exactly what happened, but your city can do something, because there's other cities involved in the killing of Isaac Aiden, but your city can lead, and tonight you're starting by listening to us, and we appreciate you changing the calm of your talaus to speak, but I want you to know, you were not elected to sit and uphold policies that are unjust, you were elected to see an opportunity to change policies when you have the moment. And your town, a young man who has so much promise ahead of him, lost his life because of the action of a department you control, you supervise, you're responsible for. We believe in Islam, in my religion, we believe there is one thing that will never be forgiven for him, and that is the loss of life. And because that life is going to come in front of you the day of judgment, we believe in it, and they're gonna ask you what you did to fight for their justice. So if you think you're not even gonna provide justice here, we believe, deep down in our hearts and our faith, that Isaac will be standing with God, asking for justice, but I believe you could go on that day, and be of those people who actually provided the justice that he so deserved. Yeah? We're gonna hear a lot of people who are frustrated, but I want you to know, you have a lot of power. Do not think that policy or procedure is the only thing ahead of you. In fact, in this state alone, we have the history of Dret Scott, which we fail to recognize, a policy that made human beings property, and forced it, a man who walked on this land who fought that. There was a time when all these policies that are in front of you may not be serving us. We're asking not for you to become the prosecution, we're asking you to provide evidence that you were holding from the community and family. And with that, we'd like to bring, I think, Sumaya, who's the sister of Isaac Aiden.
Thank you, Jelani.
As Jelani said, my name is Sumaya Aiden, I am the younger sister of Isaac Aiden. I received a text message from one of Isaac's childhood friends, who previously served in South Korea in military, and is now stationed in somewhere in Europe. He heard about the tragic incidents that happened, and wanted to tell me, as a friend, who Isaac was to him. I was told to read this at the press conference last time, but I did not withhold it. I think this is an appropriate time to let you all know who my brother was. He started the text message saying, "Whenever I had an issue, Isaac was the first person aside from my family I would consult with. He was a friend and a brother that was mature, generous, and would go out of his way to help you, whether it was just to advise you, or even loan you a couple grand. There was even a time I had to go to the emergency, and he waited all night at the hospital to make sure I was okay. This is just the type of person he was. For him, family was always came first, and he treated his friends as family. After family, came his religion. He was the kind of friend who always advised you to remember God and your relationship with him, without imposing his beliefs on you. And third, came his career. Isaac was one of the smartest kids I grew up with. He graduated high school with the highest ACT scores of his class. When he went to college, whenever he wasn't in class or work, he would come with me to the library to study. Even after hours of studying, he would still be motivated. Along with going to school, he always looked for an opportunity to keep moving forward. That led him to investing in the stock market in his late teens, and eventually starting his own business at the age of 22. Isaac will always be remembered as a successful and self-driven person, and I feel blessed to have called him my best friend." This is from Isaac's friend who is currently serving in Europe. Eagan and Bloomington Police Department has shown us that you can be, you can follow all of the rules, you can be the most, you can be the most contributing citizen to American society, you can graduate high school, get your degree, go to college, he was one semester away from graduating college, worked in corporate America, owned his own business, invested in stock, and he still was a statistic, he didn't make it to 25. You could be the example of what a black man should be, what a success story should be, and still get gunned down by police.
Come on, he's ready.
The Eagan Police Department has shown that, you guys have the power to prosecute these police and give my brother the justice that I need. We, as a family of Isaac Aiden, want the BCA to do a full and thorough investigation. We want them to do, like they say they will, but they haven't, we want them to go into these police departments with search warrants like Minneapolis Police Department did with the Justine Damon case. They said that was their best practice procedures, why aren't those best practice procedures being taken for my brother? Why are evidence being kept with us? I've looked at, we've looked at the Data Practice Act, why doesn't the family have access to the squad and body cam footage?
That's right.
Talk about it.
Why are, why did Eagan Police and all the nine other agencies involved in the killing of my brother? Ninety people were in front of him, out of all those 90s, why were two officers who were previously involved in a fatal shooting at the front line of the cops, in front of my brother? Why isn't the evidence being provided to us when one of the officers who shot my brother currently has three lawsuits filed against him for the way he's administering DWI tests? He was recently awarded the Lakeville Officer of the Year. Why? We need answers. You have that power to do, to force these departments, at least Eagan, to do a full and thorough investigation, to provide us with all of the evidence that they have, to give my brother the justice that he deserves, to prosecute these police officers. That is my demand. That is my demand, that is the demand of the family. Like you said, you've been thinking about the family of Isaac and his, and himself, Isaac. If you are, these are our demands, we want to be heard, we want, and that's not just enough, being heard is not enough. We want action, we're tired of seeing this. We're tired of seeing black men as hashtags. These are our fathers, these are our sons, they matter. They're gunned down at a disproportionate rate, and that's not okay, enough is enough. We are hurting as a community. Police are not killing dogs, they are not killing cats, they are killing black people. It's easy to kill the black person, that is not acceptable, we want justice. That is the aunt of Isaac Aiden, that is the aunt of Isaac Aiden, that comes, that shows you that we are all hurting, the Somali community is hurting, the Muslim community is hurting, the black community is hurting, all of us are hurting. The two officers that have previously killed someone, they were around my brother's age, they were white males, that, they, you guys gave them a slap on the wrist, we are not okay with them getting a slap on the wrist again. They have done it again to my brother. I don't wanna know, I don't wanna find out who they'll do it to next.
Okay, they get administrative, they get administrative, and they know that the system's protecting them, and then when they go to the court, they get the fatality.
We understand that in the media, they say that it's a standard that officers get paid administrative leave. Minneapolis Police Department fired officer Noor during the investigation. Why are these officers who have a history of killing people, and why are they on paid administrative leave, why are they not fired?
Fire them!
Mayor McGuire, council members, my name is Michelle Gross, I am the president of the organization Communities United Against Police Brutality, which has been around for over 20 years. On a personal level, much of the work that I do with Communities United Against Police Brutality is with family members of people who've been killed by police, it is in fact my expertise. And what I'm coming to talk to you about now is a little bit about what these families go through, because what the standard trajectory of these cases is, and we've seen it dozens of times, I've seen it many, many times, is that first, the person is vilified, we don't get to know what happened, we don't get to know who did it, but what we know is that the person is vilified. In fact, in the media, it was reported that Mr. Aiden had some petty misdemeanors. Okay, I'm gonna bet that everybody sitting at this desk probably has traffic tickets, and I want you to think about if something tragically happened to you, what your family would have to endure hearing it on the news, that somehow you're a bad person because you had a few petty misdemeanors. That's, to me, an outrageous situation, but it's always a grasp at straws to try to vilify that person in some fashion, thus to justify the police action, and that's unacceptable and inappropriate, and it happens every single time. Then the next step in the process is to hand over the information to an agency, in most recent years, it has been the BCA. We have very credible evidence in a number of investigations, of reviewing of their investigations, that they do not do a neutral investigation. Their quality of investigations is outrageously poor, some of it is sloppiness, some of this is deliberate, and some of it is just outright defense of the police officers and bias. And again, we have credible evidence, because we have taken the time, as an all-volunteer organization, we have taken the time to go through those investigations, spending months and months and months analyzing the evidence that they put forward, and virtually every single time, what we find is that the investigators ask loaded questions, they fail to do investigations of things that they should, for example, in one particular case where they made a claim that the individual shot a gun at the officers, the individual's hands and clothing were never tested for gunfire residue, his gun was never tested for having been fired. You know, these are the kinds of sloppy things that the BCA does. I don't know what their investigations look like when they are gaining-
They look like cover-ups.
-when they are gaining law enforcement in terms of like, you know, serious crimes that they investigate, I don't know what they look like. What I know that they look like though, when they're investigating officers, is a very poor quality job that is meant to clear the officers, period. It is not about the truth, it is about clearing the officers. So here we have evidence that could allow the community to know what happened. We don't know what happened. You know, I stand with this family because I stand with all families of stolen lives, but I truly cannot tell you that I know what happened. And why don't we know? Because that evidence is somewhere else, but it doesn't happen. Under the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act 13.82 subdivision 15, you have the right, as the originating agency of that data, to release that data. Investigatory data can be withheld by the police but need not be, that is a choice that is made, and under subdivision 15, for example, what I'd like to point out is it says that, you know, this data can be designated as private or non-public under 14.825, which we know about, but then it says, it says that the police departments and the investigatory agencies can release that data if it will, quote, "aid the law enforcement process, promote public safety, or dispel widespread rumor or unrest." I would suggest that you have at least one of those conditions, and probably all three.
I know, that's right!
Much is made of the fact that the BCA has that data, but the reality is that under the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act, all data is to be released by the originating agency, thus body camera footage that you own from your police department should and can be released. We would first have to release the slide camera footage, the body camera footage, and any other evidence that you feel will give families some kind of information and maybe some closure. You know, it's not a big request here, it is something that can be done, and you folks can be the leaders in doing it, and I would urge you to take that step. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bachelor Dean Aiden, I'm the brother of Isaac Aiden, and I just wanted to start off by saying, we're being told time and time and again that the BCA, the Eagan Police Department, and all parties involved, they're doing a very neutral investigation. After the night my brother was killed, the next day, Wednesday night, he was shot on Tuesday, Wednesday night, his names were, they released his name. Literally a couple hours from that, we've been getting harassed by media, people have been reaching out to his Facebook friends, people have been pretending to be working with Regions Hospital and different other organizations, to try to just get information from us. The officers who shot my brother were put on paid administrative leave the next day after, what's it called, they shot my brother. Their names were released this Saturday.
Shame.
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 For you guys, for the BCA and Eagan Police Departments, to be telling me you guys are doing a fair investigation, and you guys don't wanna release officers a week later, and not provide their pictures, or use anything they could find about my brother was being used, but they only released this Saturday, after me and my sister had to walk down to the BCA, have a three-hour-long conversation, then they decided to release the names this Saturday.
Telling them it was a violation, that every day they withheld the officers' names, that they were breaking the law, they were supposed to release their names and information the first day they were put on paid administrative leave.
That's right. So 242, you're exactly right.
Breaking the law!
Breaking the law!
Breaking the law.
Craminose!
As you guys know, the names of the five officers who killed my brother have been released. As my sister mentioned, two of the officers who were involved had prior incidents where their use of deadly force was justified. Anthony Keel was a Bloomington officer who killed a 24-year-old male, January 15th, 2015. He was let off the hook, and now he killed my brother July 2nd, 2019.
Serial killer!
Gun slayer.
Criminal!
Jacob Peterson.
Don't roll your eyes at them.
Jacob Peterson.
Yeah, man, don't roll your eyes.
Jacob Peterson, who works for Egan Police Department, fatally shot Zachary Primo, a 26-year-old male, June 11th, 2013, in Duluth, Minnesota. Zachary was laying face down on the ground with his gun underneath his chest, and his mother and neighbors witnessed the shooting and heard Peterson, the officer, yelling, "I'm going to kill you, Zach." And this is the Egan police officer who also shot my son, my brother.
Serial killer!
And then the third officer who shot my brother, his name is Adam Steer. He has three lawsuits filed against him for his conduct with administering sobriety tests, and he was awarded for high number of DUI arrests and as basically the best Lakeville officer of 2019.
Serial cop!
So we honestly just want to ask, how can we believe that this is a fair investigation when the pictures of the officers who shot my brother aren't being released, when information about them is not being released? And as Michelle already mentioned, it's up to you guys to decide whether you guys want to release Egan, the Egan body cam footages. There's no law or regulation stopping you guys from doing that. So at this time, it's at your guys' discretion. So if you guys wanted to choose to uphold your policy over providing us and the community information about what happened on July 2nd, that's completely your choice, 100%. And I just want to ask, is this, why are we putting officers with this kind of background at the front lines in situations like this? Is this a standard practice? Why is Bloomington doing this? Why is Egan doing this? And we said this multiple times, we'll keep saying it again, we want the dash cam footages, we want the SWAT cams, we want more information, we need answers. So what's funny to me is the first time I came into something like this, it was about the police. And it was about, we had these things called SROs over the days, and a lot of us do this. And the problem, the same problem we got right now is the same problem we have there. Y'all be beating people up, and in this case, killing people. And so, well, we fast forward, that was two years ago, 2019, every summer since 2013, y'all been wrecking somebody in all of the major metropolitan areas in Minneapolis, Egan, Utaahua, Nantucket, Hopkins. And situations like this, I know people that don't know nothing about this. This ain't, this isn't turning on Twitter yet. You want to know why? Because the same issue y'all did out here with blocking off the road, like five blocks back. Five blocks back, the same shit with the evidence, y'all doing the same shit with all of it.
Have it! Free road!
Like, everybody else is talking about. I'm 23. I just turned 23 this year. Isaac was doing the exact same stuff in this community that I'm doing. So what y'all gonna do to me? I'm actively talking about this nonsense. I'm actively reminding people, y'all got created in the first place to take people like me back down south, whether that was torture, murder, rape, burning people, stringing them up. That's what y'all got created for in the first place. So if we don't acknowledge that, you protect and serve, then start proving it. Prove it by the fact that you turn over evidence. Prove it by the fact that you... That's what that really looks like. Because what happens when y'all get killed overseas by people that look like us? Y'all getting 16 shotgun salutes, all that. And when we kneel for the flag, what y'all got to say? Y'all got issues, right? We got issues. We in this country as a whole, because of what? Nonsense like this! So if you really care, if you really want justice to be served, why don't y'all do exactly what we're asking you to do? That's all I'm gonna say.
Good evening. I'm gonna give you due, Mayor. I'm gonna give you due, because I've been in these situations a lot of times. I'm kind of an old guy. I've been around, unfortunately, I've been to these things too many times. I've seen, you know, supporting people whose families have lost loved ones due to police actions like the one that took out Brother Isaac's life, and a lot of times, they don't have patience to at least hear us. So I appreciate the fact that you didn't try to lock us all up when people were screaming at you. But I do hope that you all actually listen, because you have an opportunity here. And...
I'm sorry, can I ask your name?
My name is Mel Reed.
Thank you, Mel.
But you have an opportunity here, if you actually listen to folks. And as I think Jelani said very early, earlier, you know, for most of y'all, if you were in the same position, if you were in this position that Sister Amaya, we would defend you as well. We don't think, we don't think cops killing folks is the right thing to go. We don't, we don't agree with you. We pretty much think there's hardly any circumstances with somebody to take somebody else's life. Right? And there's definitely, considering the police have on their cards to serve and protect, I can't think of a single circumstance unless they're actually shooting somebody, and that seldom happens. In fact, when people are actually shooting, the police go in opposite direction. Come on! But I can't think of a single circumstance in which this thing would be justified. And then, so there's a lot of things that we don't know, I'm trying to use this, about the circumstances in this situation, right? But we do know that, we don't know what precipitated it, but we do know this, we know that Isaac didn't kill anybody. We know he didn't commit any murders or arms, he didn't kill anybody. And we do know, around this country, the people who've killed dozens of folks, right, in mass murders, they've been taken alive, right? Some have taken their gun in hand, right? But they somehow get taken alive. So we don't, we don't know what he did, but we do know that that's what happens in most situations, and that's what should happen in this one, no matter what the situation, that he should have been taken into custody. We don't know why it took nine cops, and ninety cops to apprehend him, right? We don't, we don't know why so many cops, but we have some suspicions, and this is a problem in our society, when you see people who look differently than you as something else, now you see the problem with white supremacy. What Donald Trump is doing is not harmless. What he's doing is separating us, so you can see people differently. That's the whole point of it. And if you see somebody different than yourself, you start to think of them as less than. If you think of somebody as less than, you do all kinds of stuff, and that's why we're here. Because they did not, your police did not see, and Bloomington and all the rest of them, they didn't see Isaac out there as a human being. It's somebody who can be victimized. And some people will hide behind, you know, the law. They'll say, well, it's legal, he didn't do X, Y, and Z, and what have you. It was legal, you know, it's justified somehow. But as a black person, I'll never forget that slavery was legal. Jim Crow segregation was legal. Right? Apartheid was legal. What's going on on the US border is legal. Separating them children and mistreatment of people is legal, but it ain't right. So a lot of things you will try to get away with because they're under the guise that it's legal, but just because it's legal don't make it right. And that's why I'm here. And I'm upset, because this is wrong, we feel it in our bones. We weren't dead, we don't know what happened, but we know that Isaac should still be here. And again, we don't know why he was killed, but we do know, we do know this about him, that he was a human being. He was her brother, right? His brother, right? Her nephew. He was a human being. When you cut him, he bled, and his blood was red just like the rest of us. That's what we do know about. We don't know why your employee Jacob Peterson killed Isaac, but we know that he killed before, and he should not have been allowed to carry a gun. Look up this guy's record. He killed some kid in Duluth, shot him in the back while he was laying on the ground. That's what the mother says, right? So how he wind up on you in the police department, that's something you ought to look into.
Represented.
Did he file his application?
We don't know.
No.
And so, we don't know exactly, I'm about to, we don't know exactly why these murders continue to happen, but we know there's something else at work. Because, you know, with all these killings, the police have on their car to serve and protect. Brother Matthew said it earlier. I'm starting to suspect that maybe their job isn't necessarily to serve and protect. Maybe it is to serve and protect certain people. Come on! Right? But another certain part of the population continues to die, right? And so you gotta ask the right questions. Maybe they're there to do something different, right? Maybe they have another goal. Now, they may not be telling us, but we can only assume, because people keep winding up dead, especially people who look like me, right? They keep coming up dead. There's gotta be a reason. We don't know, but we have our suspicions, that maybe the police's real job is to reinforce the stereotypes in this society. Come on! Reinforce all the negatives that, that's why they, that's why they hit women. As a friend of mine used to say, they hit us with that stick to remind us of our place in this society. And I'm suspicious that they killed one of us, say, once, but to remind us of our place. Come on! But we've done the right thing, and we ain't standing in our place. Everybody deserves a pat on the back, because the whole point of terrorizing us is so that we don't stand up for our rights. Come on! We don't stand up for our rights and the job at Amazon. Come on! So we don't stand up for our rights when we're walking down the street. So women don't stand up for their rights. So immigrants don't stand up for their, because this is about, they send a message to us that if you stand up, if you stand up, you're the nerve to be black in this society, we will put you in your place.
Come on! We're not taking it in our word.
So I'm done, but this kind of behavior, we always talk about democracy and what have you, and we have champ, this is what democracy looks like. This ain't what democracy looks like.
I am Odeh Kholidh Dodi, a local activist. I'm also the aunt of Marcus Golden, killed by St. Paul Police. So I stand in solidarity with Isaac's family and all stolen lives. So I want to be careful, Mayor McGuire, I really thank you for that warm welcome. For those of us who made it in, but I talked to a woman in here who was threatened with arrest, just trying to get here to the police department. So I cannot imagine that that was not coordinated somehow without your approval or your understanding. So while you welcomed us and said you wanted our comments, there were many people who made the drive out here, took the bus, or however, and couldn't get in here.
Let them know.
So that is very contrary to what you were saying. And I hope that that is not the pattern that we'll continue to see as we continue to make the call for justice for Isaac, so we need to do better. I want to just talk for the release of the videos, of the body cams, and of also the transcript from the 911 call. So I want you to understand why this is important and what happens if you do not already know what happens. The time that the police have the audio and video, the officers who have killed Isaac have the opportunity to review and watch and crack their stories and their report around the video. They also have the opportunity to edit the video and to edit the audio. These things happen, and I'm going to give you examples. Fong Lee was just 18 years old when he was riding his bike when he was killed by a Minneapolis police officer. There was a video that was released. This was years ago. The video was not panning anywhere, and it says, oh, we can see everything up until the officer shoots, and then it pans away. No, Minneapolis Police zoomed away from the incident and got close-ups of whatever was in the far-left corner, but gave the background that, oh, it panned away. No, it didn't. That was a cover-up. We saw with Jamar Clark, over a dozen cell phones were turned in. Those videos have never been released. Jamar Clark's family is still fighting for some type of justice. We've been asked for all the protests that happened. Hardell Sherrill recently died in Beltrami County Jail. Without that video, they would have no recourse, no real idea what happened, other than that they knew he was very sick. But it's the video that the mother has been able to see and use that is helping her get some justice. My nephew Marcus Golden, Paul Paulos, made a statement at a press conference saying there's no video, there was no camera. Four years later, we find out, yes, there is video and there is camera. It was left out of the police report.
They lied after the statute of limitations.
After the statute of limitations, yes. Cordell Handy, killed by St. Paul Police, there was a video release of moments before he was shot, but from the person who took that video, she had when he was shot. That part was never released, they act like it's not there. His mother still doesn't know if that video is going to be accessible, because St. Paul Police will change the audio. They changed the 911 audio and other audio from Marcus's killing. So these are things that police can do and do do. So without the audio from the 911 call or the transcript, without the video, what you're doing is you're denying Isaac and his family any means of justice, because most attorneys will not take a case until they have a video minimally, or some type of data that they can hold on to and build a case around. And the longer you wait to turn that over, the more difficult it is, and you're complacent in denying this family justice, and you're collaborating with the police and the Minnesota BCA.
And we're not going to let you get away with it, just so you know!
This family deserves to see some forward movement, and that will be done by releasing the transcript of the tape and all videos that pertain to the execution of Isaac. And that's a very tangible ask that you can make happen, and it needs to happen. There is no reason that the Minnesota BCA or any other agency needs to hold on to it other than to try and cover up in this police execution. And it's a shame that it continues to happen and over and over again, because, see, we black people, we need video to get any justice. See, that's the difference. So don't continue to deny them any chance of justice. What they need is what belongs to them. Release that they deserve to know and see what happened, and be able to find an attorney and to move this case forward and hold these police officers accountable.
Here are the comments.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Samaha. I am an educator, and there are many educators here in the room with us today, because this whole family were our students. We were with them since they first came to our school. It was a K-12 school, and we raised them together. So we are here as a family. And what happened did not just impact the family, it impacted all of us. I had to go to the burial and witness my students going on a field trip to bury one of our babies. Okay, that is hard. Okay, you don't want to see your students being buried and burying each other at this age. That is not okay. So number one, I am here to support the family, I am here to ask that everything that they need, the evidence, is their right, is the community's right, because your city will not be the same anymore. What just happened is only gonna happen more if we don't stop it right now and fix it. Everything that I do is about equity, is about policy, I know exactly how this work goes. I've been on board, I know exactly how this work is. And this is your chance to really use your power and your privilege to make an impact and a difference for the people who really need it, right? I don't know how you're going to go to sleep tonight, but I really want you to think about all these faces that you see tonight when you go to sleep, and when you wake up tomorrow, that your actions need to match the feeling that you're feeling in this room right now.
Yes!
We are one human race. This is, we are one human race. But for some reason, our babies that keep getting shot and murdered are always black.
Come on!
And that is not okay.
Not at all!
And when you have the power and privilege to change, please, 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 I beg you to do something about it.
Do something!
Hello, my name's Liz Reyer. I've been an Egan resident for 26 years. I've raised four kids here. My children are close in age to Isaac, and they were raised under the umbrella and the sanctuary of white privilege. My children were not angels, they were children. They got in more trouble than it sounds like Isaac did. And yet, they always got the white supremacy, white privilege passed. And I'm tired of watching it, I'm tired of seeing Philando killed, Jamar killed, and now Isaac killed. And I'm hearing all of the... And yet, they always got the white supremacy, white privilege passed. And I'm tired of watching and I'm tired of seeing Philando killed, Jamar killed, now Isaac killed. And I'm hearing all of the tools that you have and the power that you have. And I'm asking you to stand up, make me proud of Eagan, make the rest of us proud of Eagan, make it a place where black people, brown people, immigrants all feel like they can feel as safe as I do. Because this has gone on too long, too many times and we can stop it. And if we white people don't finally stand up and take a stand, it won't change. It's our job.
Thank you, Liz. Additional comments?
My name is Lorette Van Tell. I'm an organizer with Twin Cities Coalition for Justice for Jamar. I also used to live in Eagan and I lived in Eagan like 13 years ago. And yeah, I didn't feel welcome then and I don't feel welcome now.
Come on.
Say it.
I, I, I'm sick every summer, it seems. I'm in somebody's city hall chamber. I'm outside somebody's government center or something. Every year, we are getting killed and I'm done with it. I'm really, I'm really over it, you know? I, you know, I, I shouldn't know these names. I shouldn't know Isaac's name. I shouldn't know Jamar's name. I shouldn't know Philando's name. These people should be with us.
That's right.
And, you know, and I, 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 I sit here and I, because the same question I keep asking us over and over is, I, I thought Minnesota did not have a death penalty. And yet, cops are judge, jury and executioner when it comes. And it's, it's getting on my nerves. I, I, I mean, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm a parent of two chill, two small, of nine-year-old twins. And I, I hate having to explain to them every time when something like this happens, why? Why is it that people who look like us continue to get killed? Why every time we go to cities like Eagan, we go to cities like Bloomington, we go to cities like Whitfield, we're not welcomed in those cities? And we should be welcomed in those cities. We should feel like, we should feel like we're safe anywhere we go. I don't even feel safe in my neighborhood in Minneapolis.
Come on.
So why, I, I, you know, I hope this family gets justice. I stand in solidarity with the Eagan family. I hope they get, I know, I don't hope, I want them to get justice. To get the same justice Justine Demont got.
Exactly.
All the justice she got. She, and she got it because she was white. Let's not, let's not. And so why is it that then black and brown folks have to beg for the same exact justice? If we're, you all pledged to the flag. If we're, it's supposed to be justice for all, then it should be justice for all. You should do that. I, I release the tapes to the family, release any evidence you got. Because there should not be killer cops on the streets.
Yeah.
And I mean, I know we talk about Eagan, but I've seen Bloomington City's police handiwork too firsthand. So I, we should be marching on them next.
I'm Sandra Simonson and I'm a mental health professional. I've worked in Dakota County for many years. I'm here because a lot of you have probably heard now the term historical trauma. But what people forget is history still keeps on happening. This is contemporary trauma. You wonder, you know, why so much happens in the world? It's because people are continually traumatized. And it's in the present, it's not just historical. You know, in the suburbs, lived in the suburbs all the time. I've been up here in the, in the metro. And, you know, everybody likes to have it all nice in the suburbs. And everything that's conflict always happens in that Minneapolis and St. Paul. And I worked in, Philando and I were work neighbors, okay? And it hurt me a lot to come back to the suburbs and have everybody distance themselves from what happened. And when I went to work that day, the Friday after the Wednesday night, he was shot. The air that was heavy with emotion in that neighborhood is something I have never felt before and I hope I never have to feel again. That neighborhood was so hurting. I'd met children who he served lunch to that still get sad at the mention of his name. But when I came back to Lakeville after that weekend of being in St. Paul, the media, what they could say is, at least we don't have all those troubles out here.
We got it now.
The distancing that goes on is ridiculous. I, but what I hope from this is that only that you follow the family or, you know, grant the families and the communities demands. I hope, I hope that you wake up and see the trauma that caught, that happens just because people look away and attempt to distance it to be a problem somewhere else.
Additional comments?
Um, hello, I'm, my name is Yijomu Wajah. I'm 18 years old and I live five minutes from here. I just want to say that I'm sure I went to school with a lot of your children and aunts, like nephews and all that stuff. And I just want to say that I'm very afraid. Just trying to get into this building today, I was yelled at by a cop and said that this was an unauthorized space. That's not a democracy.
Which one of you killer cops was it?
I also just want to say, I spent 18 years in the K through 12 education system and I've been told that America is supposed to be the land of the free and we have all these laws that are supposed to protect us. Why don't any of them ever get enacted? Like the fact that this meeting exists proves that your country doesn't work. Like this, this system that we have going terrifies me. And I just want to say sorry for the family that like had to go through all of this. And I'm sorry that you have to sit here today and look at these people just stare at you. I am so sorry that this has happened. But this is not the reality. How am I supposed to go home after this and feel safe when you, your guys are just five minutes down the street? I do not feel safe. And as a youth in this society who works with other black and brown youth, none of us feel safe. You guys don't protect anything but yourself. Please change the system. You're the only people who have power for some reason.
Uh, hello, my name is, uh, Vashar Yusuf. I was a friend of Isaac's. I went to school with him and, uh, um, he was one of the best people I ever knew. Not too long ago, two girls went missing in somewhere in the suburbs. Isaac called me and a friend of mine who's also in, in the group back there. And he told us that it was our duty to help find those girls. We spent our entire day searching for those girls. And we were able to find them in the lake because they passed away. If it wasn't for Isaac, we would not, we would not have gotten out there. We would have been in something else completely. Isaac was a pioneer. He was a visionary. He was a leader in our community. And he wasn't only that, he was also a loved one by everybody here.
Everybody.
I understand, I don't understand the point of us asking for the evidence because it's pointless. Like, uh, it's part of the system. Like you're supposed to give us the video. What is the point of the video? For you to keep it? No. It's for the public to see it so that we know justice is being served in this country.
Come on.
There's been a lot of black people that have been killed this year and the past year. And we watch it on TV and it's become senseless to us. We don't even feel anything anymore. You know why? Because they're dying every single day. And I, I see the same look in all of your eyes that it's become senseless to you too because you're in a hurry. You're asking us, is that it every two seconds? Well, I understand that you might be in a hurry. We all have something to say. Isaac was our leader and we want justice for him and we want justice for his family and we wanted yesterday, not tomorrow. We're not done talking. Isaac went to the University of Minnesota. He was just a kid. He was leading his sister, his brother back there and another brother of his in a way that life should be lived. They don't have parents over here. They don't have mom and a dad. Their grandma raised them. Their community raised them. We are their brothers. We are their sisters. We are their family. We are their community, okay? And we came up together. The reason why you see so many people is not because Isaac was some kid on the streets or anything like that. He was a loved one, okay? He employed people. Isaac employed people. He employed some of my friends, okay? He was a man, a part of this community. Since our community came here, the Minneapolis business has been booming. It went up by 36%. African business development went up by 36%. And that's because we came here and we want to contribute to society. Now, I ask you, please, contribute to society and do what's right and post those videos every single place that there is online. We want to see exactly what happened. We don't know what happened to Isaac. And this is our leader, okay? We are without a leader today because of those fucking cops. Sorry for my speech.
Salaam alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. My name is Muhammad Sharif Salat. And I'm here in solidarity with Isaac. I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, I want to ask all of you, I want to help you all understand because there's no way, no possible way for you guys, all us white folks sitting up here, to understand what we go through on a daily basis, what Isaac went through on a daily basis, what everybody sitting behind me has gone through on a daily basis in 1994. They didn't come here for fun. They came here because they ran away from their nation.
Yeah, we started.
Yeah, we started. They ran away because they had, they had nothing. It was warfare. It was falling apart and they came here looking for a better place. My dad didn't come here for mitigation. My dad didn't come here for beauty. I called upon you here for a better future. This isn't the future that we're here for. This isn't the future that Isaac was here for. This isn't the future that his family was here for. Now, I'm, I'm someone that has been through being, guns being pulled on me by cops, being harassed by police, being beat up by police. I'm not scared of cops. I don't care. You can click, line them up right there. I could care less. I don't give a fuck.
That's right.
I have three siblings that I don't want to go through that trauma. I have younger kids that I work with and my community sit on a daily basis that I don't want them to ever, ever be harassed by a police officer, any way, shape or form. You guys all have that power right now, beyond everything else, to change the structure of this nation. Not only in this case, but in every case moving forward. You guys have that power and absolute power corrupts absolute. So if you guys don't want to use your power correctly, we can take that from now. So for your sake, for your sake, not really, not really because I care about y'all's sake, but for your sake and for Isaac's sake, do the right thing.
Do the right thing.
The last thing I want to say is this. Oftentimes, people are given this pass where they say, oh, I didn't know or I'm ignorant, right? And as human beings, God has gifted us with this, with this inherent inability within us, right? To know when something is wrong. To know that, damn, I fucked up. That's what all y'all feeling right now. I can see in your eyes. You guys all know, you guys all know that what you're doing is wrong. There's no way around it. There's no way hop, skip or run. You can't do it. You know it. It's in your head. I can just tell. So for you guys and for your sake, right? Just try, just stop trying to like finesse this whole situation. Stop trying to find out some policy and, oh, well, I got to do the paperwork and just do the right thing.
That's right.
Release these tapes, do the right thing and let's, let's find justice for yourself, shalawat.
Good evening. My name is Autumn Lake. I'm a member of the Minnesota Anti-War Coalition, a grassroots organization that has been fighting for justice against US foreign policy for the past 20 years. I have two issues I need to bring up. So I am a trans woman. Now historically, there have been numerous groups that have been targeted at an increased rate for police violence. Trans women are one of them. But black folks and indigenous folks and immigrants have been targeted, targeted far more. Top of the list. Now, in my own history, in history of trans women, we used to be dragged out of our stay spaces, out of our spaces where we, our recreational spaces, our spaces where we made community. We were beaten bloody by the police. We were dragged out to the street. That has gotten better for me as a white trans woman. But this is not the case for our black brothers and sisters. It's not the case for our indigenous brothers and sisters. It's not the case for our immigrant brothers and sisters. This injustice still goes on for them.
Canada!
So as a member of a community that historically fell victim to police violence, I cannot stand by while y'all refuse to use your power, that your voters have confided in you to release the dash cam footage, to release the body cam footage, to give this family the peace of mind and the justice they deserve. The second thing I want to bring up. The reason I, as an anti-war activist, am here, as an activist that has organized against how the US's aggressive foreign policy has victimized other nations of the earth. The United States has victimized the country of Somalia for decades. US Commandant Africa, Africom, is authorizing drone strikes in the country of Somalia. We continue to attack that land. And then when Somalis come here to find peace, to find a place to have family, we continue to victimize them. They can't have peace in their homeland and they can't have peace here and you have the power to change it. Your responsibility, your responsibility, your responsibility, your responsibility.
My name is Cullen James. I'm also with the Anti-War Committee and I wanted to point out that Philando Castile was stopped 53 times for traffic violations. And the Officer of the Year at Eagan is the one with the most DUIs in spite of the fact that he has lawsuits brought against him. Is this police corruption, is, is this police brutality profitable for y'all? Y'all making money off this shit?
Yeah.
But clearly, you know, it's profitable enough for nine police agencies to kill Isaac Eagan, but it's not profitable enough for you to share any of that money with the black and brown victims. It's not profitable enough for you to share it with Jamar's family, only enough for Justine Demont, a white woman.
Yeah.
I want to say peace and blessings to Isaac and his family, his sister Samaya and brother David and his grandmother. And that's the only name that I'll say up here, honestly. You know, and I hope I do some justice. And I'm, I'm, I'm a last speaker, it looks like. And, you know, it almost feels like deja vu, right? It is deja vu for a lot of us who's been involved, who've been involved in, in a, in a lot of these situations where we're asking, you know, a, a, a body who's responsible for these, for these agencies. And, you know, and sometimes you would think we're coming here in good faith and we're able to talk. And, you know, and sometimes you would think we're coming here in good faith and we're able to talk to you, but you look around the room, and you got these men lined up. You know, and, and this really— A, a, a lot of us, a lot of us who feel hella uncomfortable around these, around these men, you know, who, who are, you know, strapped from head to toe like they're going to war or something, and go, "We're coming here to talk."
That's right.
And, and, and look what's happening. You know what I mean? You can't say you didn't invite them here. You know, people are coming over here to voice, you know, their concerns and, 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 and asking for justice. And, and, you know, beyond all the legal BS and, and the procedures you guys all go through on a human level, just know that they killed a man. They killed somebody's son, they killed somebody's, uh, uh, brother and sister. And, and if that can somehow penetrate you, then, then, then we got a lot of work to do, honestly.
Y'all gotta get up.
Right. So, you know, and, and, and there's a lot that I really want to say, but I'm trying to really hold my tongue, you know, and, but, but at the end of the day, this, this will keep happening unless, you know, something is done about these men who can, who can do this to somebody. Where they, where they can literally put somebody in a corner like a rack and kill them. Did somebody say that earlier? None of those men, what, close to a hundred? And none of them could we had negotiated with another human being, and you're talking for four hours? And what ends up happening is, you kill them? Does that make sense to any of you? I'm pretty sure you guys have, have heard about all the hostage situations and, and, and people being negotiated with. Just recently, they had somebody, they were talking for like twelve hours, and they survived. Listen, you know, we, we don't have to go into a history lesson, we know what this country's about. We know, we know what every agency and, and, and those that claim to represent the people. We, we know who, who, at the end of the day, what laws and, and who you're protecting. Because it doesn't take this long, and you want, and you sure as hell won't give the power to these men and their agencies and institutions to release these tapes or not. It should have been released, and you know that. And I'm gonna just end it, end it with that and echo what everybody's been saying. At the end of the day, the only name that needs to be said and, 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 and should be mentioned in everyone of y'all's memory is Isaac Egan.
Hello, uh, my name is Muna. I'm twenty-three years old. Uh, I just wanted to ask a simple question. What's the holdup? I really want to know. Because if somebody comes up to me and tells me, "I stole a cookie, I got the receipt in my pocket," I could just pull it out and show it. So, what's the holdup? What's being hidden? There's a lot of questions, there's a lot of things that are going on, and I feel like the police are about the law. I feel like when you become a police officer, you swear by the law to protect it, to preserve it. But, this is not being upheld.
By the cops.
By the, by the cops, by the police officers. The ones who are supposed to be our role models. So, what's the holdup? Really, think about it, what's the holdup? Thank you.
So, with that said, um, I want to again thank all of you for listening to us. You have two choices ahead of you. One choice is a choice that most cities have made, which is to keep the status quo. And it sounds easy, but I think that's not what Eagan would do.
We'll be back.
The other choice, the other choice is for this suburban city and its leaders to declare that they will not, and they're gonna put a stop to this type of behavior where information that the public needs to know is going to be hidden. And you will release those tapes to the family and then to the public. And you will do that not because you are changing something bad, that you're doing that because you are going to change the history of a system that continues to treat people of color differently. I personally believe that Egan can, can lead the nation, and to lead the state of Minnesota, and can be the hope for this nation, as we are being polarized every single day. And I personally believe, if you do that, you will be a little light shining on the North Star of this great state. A light that will help and heal the pain of so many families across this country, that it's possible, on this land, in a small town named Eagan, they may mispronounce it, that the folks and the leadership stood together and said, "No, if Eric Garner is not gonna get it, Isaac will get it in our town, and we will change the history of what police brutality looks like and accountability in this nation." You have that choice ahead of you. Choose to be the light for justice in this country. Be those that will be remembered for what you did that was right, not what you did that was comfortable in the status quo. And so with that, we say as we leave, "Egan can lead." Say it after me.
Egan can lead. 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 Justice for Isaac. 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 We'll be back. We'll be back. We'll be back. We'll be back.
We'll be back. We'll be back. We'll be back. We'll be back. We'll be back. We'll be back.
The people united can never be defeated.
The people united can never be defeated. The people united can never be defeated. The people united can never be defeated. The people united can never be defeated. The people united can never be defeated. The people united can never be defeated. The people united can never be defeated. The people united can never be defeated. The people united can never be defeated. The people united can never be defeated. The people united can never be defeated.
Black lives matter. 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 Muslim lives matter. Black lives matter. refugee rights matter. Black lives 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 matter. Muslim lives matter. Black 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 lives matter. Muslim lives matter. Muslim lives matter. Muslim lives matter. Muslim lives matter. Black lives matter. Black lives matter. Black lives matter. If we don't get no justice—
They don't get no peace.
If we don't get no justice—
They don't get no peace.
If we don't get no justice—
They don't get no peace.
If we don't get no justice—
They don't get no peace.
Black lives matter. Black lives matter. Black lives matter. Black lives matter. It suck?
Matters.
Isaac—
Matters.
Isaac—
Matters.
Isaac—
Matters.
Isaac—
Matters.
Muslim lives matter. Muslim lives matter. Muslim lives matter. Muslim lives matter. Black lives matter. Black lives matter. Black lives matter. Black lives matter. I'm out of chance.
What do we want? What do we want? What do we want? What do we want?
Prosecute the police. No justice, no peace. 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 Prosecute the police.
What do we want?
Justice!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Justice!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Justice!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Justice!
When do we want?
Justice!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Justice!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Justice!
When do we want it?